My do.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the, uh, to order the meeting of the North Brunswick Township Board of Education, regular public meeting Wednesday, February 23rd, 2022. We can please rise for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Mr. Brockman. Mr. Duran Harris.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Legori.
Here.
Dr. Patel.
Here.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
Mr. Wen.
Here.
Ms. Zollick.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Toth. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM on Thursday, February 3rd, 2022 in the following manner: Posted on the bulletin board reserved for announcements in the board office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick, New Jersey; mailed to the home news, Tribune, Sentinel, and the Clerk of the Township of North Brunswick; and delivered to the nine duly elected board members. And at this time, I'll pass it over to you, Mr. Rook.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, we're very honored this evening to have a presentation by the Brothers Before Others for trauma kits for the district. Um, we will hear the story about the trauma kits a little bit when they present. So I'd like to invite Michael Burke, John Pfeiffer, and Josh Oliveri to come up. Thank you. And we have the microphone over here, so just to make sure that all of our millions of viewers can hear you. And you're welcome to take it off if you'd rather walk around with it. That's fine, too.
Yeah, that's a fact. Stand here. Um, thank you again. My name is Josh Oliveri. I'm a board member for the National War Enforcement Charity, voted for others, and active court authority police officer. Our charity was founded in 2014, actually by Michael Burke, retired NYPD police officer. Back then, our goal, our initial goal, was to send flower arrangements to every line of duty death, no matter what rating, which is something that we flawlessly maintain. COVID presented challenges because a lot of services weren't advertised, and elected wouldn't have proper services. So that created a difficult time for us, but again, flawlessly. So as far as the trauma kits, part of the story, one of our members, the beauty of our charity is a national charity. So we get our members, retired sheriff's officer from Maryland. He's now in the Clark and Grace High School in Maryland. He now DJs. He's doing an event out there, and he stole a similar product in their school. So that's a great idea. That's why I always tell people, so you never underestimate the power of an individual, right? It's just one kid in one random school in the middle of nowhere, and it sparked this idea. We saw this, and again, the beauty of what he's created is we're very proactive. We see an opportunity like this, and we should be doing this. Um, because regardless of where you stand politically, you can't ignore the uptick in violence in schools. And our kids are our most precious resource. Um, George is going to speak about what's actually included in these kits, but the beauty of these being in the schools is it provides first responders and the school staff with immediate high-grade first aid should there be a mass injury incident. Yeah, a lot of police departments are catching up, and cops are getting issued individual stuff that will go on their belts. Um, but none of those kits that are on the belt are going to have the level and quality of, uh, these, uh, this equipment here. Um, yeah, Senator, I'll let you talk about that. For me, the beauty, not just this, but our flower fund, um, all of our members are active or retired police officers. So you get, in this climate of defunding the police, you hear it all over the country. Things like this are all coming straight out of cops' pockets. And these are coming from cops that aren't even from North Brunswick, all over the state. We have members of the police department that are in our charity, but we're, we vary between 2,000 and 3,000 members. So you have cops all over our country that contributed to this. And I always say, with Sheriff, now retired Sheriff David Martin, nobody cares about their community. And things like this prove that's the beauty of my career. George Sickler is probably the actual TACMed who made the products. So I'm going to let him, retired NYPD, I'm going to let him talk about the products that are in here so you guys have an idea of what's in the kit. We donated seven, so there will be one in each school.
And we'd like to thank you for that. That was, it was, it was as, as, as one kit for one school. And so we reached out to you and said, is there any way that you guys could, could consider donating one for each school? And then you really stepped up to do that, and we really appreciate that.
Hi, everyone. Uh, George Sickler, I'm the manufacturer's rep for Tactical Medical Solutions. Uh, I will say that the last time I was at the school board meeting, it wasn't as honorable as this. My mom and dad were probably sitting there with me back, you know, 20 years ago. But what an honor it is to be here today, right? So, you know, we, we do this, these programs all over the, all over the country. I'm fortunate enough to, uh, travel and teach along with this. Inside of each one of those white containers is what we'll call a trauma kit. Uh, it's not really a boo-boo kit. Uh, it's for things that are more serious, whether they be, uh, uh, an injury that's created intentionally or environmentally. We want to give the initial responders, which are who you guys are, who the teachers are, the first responders are coming, but you guys are the initial responders. Knowing what to do with equipment like that, um, saves lives. Okay, I've been, I've been on that side where it saves lives. Part of the program, uh, and we'll do it with the district, the school boards, I'll do it with me afterwards, it does include online training. So there is a training portal for however many staff members that you have that can go online in 20 to 30 minutes, understand the actual products that are in there. If you want to take a quick minute and I'll just kind of go over what's in there?
Absolutely. Do you just take the microphone with you?
Sure.
Make sure we can, our viewers can hear it?
Oh, hold on. Like your else? Yeah. So like I said, inside here, there's these big red fold bags, uh, just like this. And then in, inside of each, uh, van is five trauma kits, right? So just like Lowbrook was a masked guy with the incident, it'd be like awkward. But inside the kit, right, uh, tourniquet for a major hemorrhage. There's a pressure bandage on the inside, which would be something along these lines. To wrap around it, create pressure. Inside of the bandage itself is packing gauze as well. So that's kind of like a two-for-one. Surgical gloves, tape, and then there's a way to create, um, a chest seal, which you guys will learn about, uh, through the, through the training. So there's a red casualty card, there's directions inside of here of what to do should somebody not have done the online training. And then also inside the kit, there's two patient litters that if you had to carry somebody from an area that wasn't able to carry themselves, people, you know, people can do that. I guess it'll be important to, I'm sure there's a police department here who trained a school resource officer. They'll become familiar with this, and they probably most of the already are. Uh, because I do outfit the whole county, truthfully. But for continuity of operations across the spectrum, they'll know what's in here and what's not there. Uh, any other questions?
And that online training is free. There's no charge for that.
Yeah, so the online training portal, which either somebody will get with me or whoever, it's cartoonish.
It's accessible.
Where it's not, uh, it's not that, that we need to do it, right? So, um, years ago, when I did this, and we're still doing it now, we signed up for this, right? But these initial responders haven't. So in order to get the volume from them, use this equipment. They can be on their own, somewhere, they come across a kit and some sort of an injury where they can save somebody's life, right? So that's, yeah. Um, my pleasure. Thanks. Any questions?
Thank you. I have to say, you know, you know, in all my years when I was teaching, and when I was a principal at a school once, um, a middle schooler put his hand through a window, and he actually nicked his artery. And this kind of thing, you know, he, he actually bled throughout the entire building before they could get the bleeding stopped. So something like this could have made a difference in getting, you know, he obviously got to the hospital and got saved. But, you know, this could have been a very helpful thing in an accident like that.
So I think in the industry, right in this trauma space, uh, we call this public access. Um, and the industry seems to be leaning towards in the next couple of years that we think this type of bleeding control will become high school curriculum. If you think back to when we were kids and, you know, we, we learned CPR as a lifeguard and then, uh, AED came a couple of years after that, this is the next evolution of that. So, um, it's, it's a needed space, and we're talking about saving people's lives and, you know, whether it be intentional casualty incident or a, you know, environmental accident.
And thank you. Our, we have a, a school nursing supervisor who will work closely with Mr. Mizraal, our security director, making sure that everybody is appropriately trained and knows how to use it and everything's installed properly. So thank you very much, and we appreciate our North Brunswick police officers who've come to join us this evening as well. Thank you. You guys are okay? We take a minute to take a picture. Barry, did you, Mr. Harris, did you want to add anything?
Uh, no, I just want to say thank you. We really appreciate it. You know, obviously, this is very useful, and we just appreciate, you know, the time and the effort you put in. And, uh, you know, just thank you. We really appreciate it.
All right. Do we want to take a minute and take a picture? You guys are okay with that? Go over by that, we can do it right by the.
Yeah, so the, right, there'd be purpose A D boxes, um, and when you're told, you know, there's an arm and a hand. So it's a great system. We do travel all the way east, and I won't tell the school district that I do it, uh, but some of the bigger school districts.
Are board members up there including our students?
I broke the rule if you don't have enough to hold classes. It's me. Nope. See, are there any questions for me forward, any issues, whatever, like I said, you got contacts about the police department that are inside our town? George, in our town, we need to speak out.
Thank you again, Mr. Oliveri.
Uh, Mr. Legori, can you take item number six, please?
Sure, Mr. President. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board minutes: The regular public meeting of January 26th, 2022, and the executive minutes from January 26th, 2022.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion? We've accepted the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Toth. Any communications?
No communications this evening?
Any other reports, old business?
No old business, no new, new business, and I do have my administrative report.
Good evening to all our families, students, guests, and viewers here tonight. It is with great pleasure that I share out some really positive news with you this evening because we know we haven't always had that much positive news. Our district supervisor of nursing, Ms. Mary Ellen Engel, has been named as the NJPSA FEA Visionary Supervisor of the Year for the State of New Jersey. Her dedication, hard work, and visionary leadership have been an anchor for our pandemic response in North Brunswick Township schools. Additionally, she has led the district towards a focus on health and wellness, even within such a challenging time of a global pandemic. Ms. Engel will receive a $7,000 award to be used within the district and a $1,000 personal award as well. She will be honored at the Fall NJPSA Conference in October, and we thank her for all of her visionary leadership, insights, and guidance for our district's students, staff, and families. A few notes for our audience this evening. First of all, due to the, uh, new 11th grade graduation test called the NJGPA, students in ninth, 10th, and 12th grades will come to school on a two-hour delay during the week of March 14th, which is the mandated week for this test. Additionally, the parent-teacher conferences that had originally been scheduled for that week have been moved to March 24th and 25th, and those dates will be publicized widely on our website and through Kinvo. Finally, a letter was posted to our website and sent to families via Kinvo indicating that on March 7th, 2022, when the governor's mask mandate expires, MBT schools will become a mask optional district. While we know this is a controversial and personal choice, the challenging landscape of COVID has made this possible, the changing landscape of COVID has made this possible. We fully hope that our entire community will continue to be as respectful of each person and family's choices about wearing a mask beginning on March 7th. That is it for my report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any student reports?
Yes. So February may have been a short month, but it's certainly been a packed month. So starting out right in the first week, on February 4th, SGO sponsored our annual talent show. We had 13 amazing acts participate.
It was awesome. Cloud Nine, Cloud Nine, the band, won, I think it was a $100 prize or something like that. And it was like split between like seven of them, so I'm like, not bad, not bad. Um, February 11th, two Fridays ago, we hosted, um, with the class of 2024 and 2025, a cake decorating contest, um, inspiration from Linwood or something, I think they said, or maybe the elementary schools used to do it.
Livingston.
Livingston, yeah. I went, I went to school in the New Brunswick, so I did not know about this. Um, there were over 20 teams who participated, and the winning team, I think, was a, like, a koala-type panda sanctuary thingy. It was really cool. It was really cool.
And then during February, the Human Rights Coalition sold Yuda bands. All proceeds from this sale assist a student in Zimbabwe with their education cause.
Um, this Friday, the 25th, is, Ms. Pastner is.
Advisor.
Advisor, yeah, yeah. Um, this Friday, the 25th, the BCA Black Culture Alliance will hold its Black History Month celebration, which is titled "A Dive Into the Despaura." The doors open at 6:30 PM, and the show begins at 7:00 PM.
And then preparations are underway for the 37th Annual Rockathon, which will take place March 4th and 5th, and it goes to funding, supporting a great cause. And one thing that isn't on the list, but that did just happen today, um, the Prevention Using Student Help Club spoke virtually to students at Livingston's about being cyber-safe and about cyberbullying and all that kind of stuff. It was a really good experience for the students and the younger students alike. But that's everything for our report.
Thank you both. Uh, for committee reports, Ms. James?
Sure. The Education Committee met on February 9th, and we discussed, of course, the updates as it relates to, um, some policies that are listed for our review tonight for first reading. Um, a lot of them deal with student assessment, the high school graduation policies, school surveys, um, and others that are listed in our agenda. Uh, those are on for first reading, so we'll continue with that, uh, discussion and review going forward. Um, we also briefly discussed the mask mandate, as Superintendent Shiroka just noted, that that will be, uh, mask optional effective on March 7th. We reviewed some assessments, um, that are coming up, and NJGPA being one of them that has, um, caused some scheduling changes that Ms. Shiroka just noted. We discussed the Professional Learning Day that took place on February 3rd, and it seems like that was extremely, um, well-received. There was a diverse group of employees that were able to participate, and I am just constantly impressed by hearing about the professional learning that's happening here and knowing that we're doing our best to make sure that we are tapping into the needs of our students in the classroom. Um, I will defer to the, uh, agenda for any other comments from my report.
Thank you, Ms. James.
Thank you.
Mr. Wen?
None at this time.
Ms. Keith?
Yes, the Negotiations Committee met last night with our teachers' union regarding our contract negotiations that is currently ongoing.
Thank you. Ms. Toth?
Yes, uh, the Human Resources Committee met on Wednesday, February 9th. Um, on tonight's agenda, we have some folks who are resigning or retiring. The North Brunswick Township Board of Education, we thank you for your service, and we wish you well with your future endeavors. Uh, we discussed any upcoming staff leaves of absences and how those positions are being filled. Um, we discussed, um, some reassignments, some leaves of absences, um, current vacancies and how we're looking to fill those. Um, we also talked about the personnel budget request for the, uh, full year of 2023. Um, we also discussed some related policies that are new. Um, those are listed, I believe, in the agenda as well. Um, and in regard to some community relation items, we discussed that the monthly newsletter that's coming out is for February as well as back to January combined. We discussed some strategic planning, um, our comprehensive equity plan, and then, um, some COVID updates. Uh, our numbers are looking better. The tracker is constantly being updated, and we also discussed the mask optional, uh, as well.
Thank you. Mr. Legori?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Business Operations Committee met, uh, two weeks ago, Wednesday, February 9th. Among the items discussed pertaining to the high school, the leveling work on the auxiliary gym floor was to commence on February 11th and proceed through that weekend. Uh, for the high school roof, we were waiting on parts, and we thought we may be able to start in about two weeks, but we needed to confirm and coordinate with the high school to ensure that there was either minimal or no impact to student learning. Uh, ongoing discussions about transformers and gear maintenance, where we're coordinating with the town, the high school, and PSE and G, where we're hoping this could be done possibly during spring break. And then we discussed the all-too-popular heating issues at the high school. We discussed that there were coils that were being manufactured on this evening's agenda. Uh, under Finance 3D, on page 15, there's a $41,000 motion to be approved for those coils. The rooftop units have been repaired, and as of the meeting date, we had six rooms that still had portable units, plus another four rooms with space heaters. That was as of two weeks ago. Uh, pertaining to the middle school, there's still ongoing conversations about the solar lease. Uh, it is signed, and the vendor is working on a plan to install the panels at this time. Uh, the Dawnway Building, uh, that, that building in front of the new middle school uh, had some flooding issues. The township continues to remediate. It's clear that the school district is not in that building at this time. Uh, from a greater facility standpoint, the ongoing projects are still in progress, including the district radios, which are delivered, uh, due to be delivered on February 26th. The cameras at the high school in Linwood should be installed by the end of February. Uh, the Vigilon controllers, uh, should be installed fairly soon as the readers have started to arrive. The trucks, uh, one arrived on the date of our meeting on the 9th. The last one is still TBD. There's still an F-450 with a spreader that's TBD as well. We discussed a couple of audits that are ongoing. The annual comprehensive financial report, uh, is due on March 15th now, and a note that that was extended. So the public meeting to review is still TBD. It won't be in February as we had originally planned. It's possible it could be at our March public meeting, uh, but we will, we will keep you posted on that. We discussed the procurement review of our school food authorities' school nutrition program. There were a couple of small follow-ups, including an updated form and, uh, the formation of an advisory board to discuss menus. That's actually on our agenda as Attachment 4, under Miscellaneous 1B, tonight. Um, the New Jersey Department of Agriculture Administrative Review will begin on March 14th as well. There is a perfunctory transfer of funds that's on tonight's agenda, under Finance 3A, on page 14, to close out the NJARM account and transfer those funds from Fund 30 to Fund 40. It has to do with the proceeds from bonds. And then we had a discussion about the FY '23 budget. Governor Murphy has delayed his budget address to March 8th, which means that our budget meeting will have to also be subsequently delayed. I believe it's going to be advertised for Wednesday, March 23rd. We discussed the capital and maintenance reserve and how we'll be using that for our HVAC work in the upcoming year. We talked about our revenue sources, including state aid and the tax levy. And overall, Mrs. Shiroka informed us that the budget process has been smooth, aided by the increased use of Google Forms rather than manual forms, and that the Systems 3000 software has been utilized much more this year as well. We had a brief discussion about policy. We also discussed the masking update. And that would conclude the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Legori. Dr. Patel?
Not at this time.
Ms. Zollick?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Toth, can you take item number nine?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrative student and committee reports.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion? We've accepted all the reports.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to take a few minutes to review the rest of the agenda. We're currently on page two, so we'll move to three, four, five, and six, seven, and eight, nine, and 10, 11, and 12, 13, and 14, 15, and 16, and 17, and 18. At this time, we'd like to open it up to, uh, public session for comments on agenda items only. Uh, again, if you have any comments or questions on agenda items, we'd ask that you come to the podium, sign in, and state your name. Seeing that there are none, may I please have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, the public session on the agenda items only is closed.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Keith, can you please take item number 13?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items: Personnel, Curriculum, Miscellaneous, Finance Items 1 through 3, Policy and Transportation.
Second. Mr. Duran Harris?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes, but I'm going to abstain. I'm sorry, I'm going to abstain on item 1E on page 11 as it pertains to family.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Mr. Wen?
Yes.
And Ms. Zollick?
Yes.
Uh, all the motions have been accepted.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, we'd like to open up to public session on any matter. So again, any matter, agenda or non-agenda related, if you'd like to, uh, speak to the board, we ask that you come to the podium, sign in, and state your name. Seeing that there are none, may I please have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ellie.
Ellie, thank you. And second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion? This session is closed.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, we'll be moving into a closed session. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presented exist, now therefore be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Currently, it says personnel and negotiations. We are actually only talking about negotiations. And it is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public as such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately. May I please have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We can go into closed session.
And I would like to thank the MBTEA for delivering cookies for us this evening, and they are in the back here.
Thank you.
So if anybody would like to grab one as we go to pu, to closed session? We got, we got to get the logistics of this figured out, Mrs. Pastner. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
May I have a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
Thank you. At this time, we'll be moving into a closed session. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presented exist, now therefore be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here-and-after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows. Currently, it says personnel and negotiations. We are actually only talking about negotiations. And it is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately. May I please have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We can go into closed session.
And I would like to thank the MBTEA for delivering cookies for us this evening, and they are in the back here.
Thank you.
So if anybody would like to grab one as we go to closed session? We got, we got to get the logistics of this figured out, Mrs. Pastner. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.